All right, it is 6:30 on the nose and we're going to go ahead and get started. We have a kind of lengthy meeting tonight, so I would like to call the May 10th, 2022 Milledgeville City Council Meeting to order, and I will ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Walden? Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present, if you will stand with me for the roll call, I mean, a prayer and a pledge at this time. Eternal Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for how you allowing us to come together and meet to conduct the business of this your city. We thank you for looking down and showering upon us, for we at the city have seen our share in this year already, let alone in last year. I thank you for Councilman Mullins' life and all that he gave to this council. Although this circle is still around, we are missing a link, and we thank you, Lord, for the link and the time that he was with us. We thank you for Ms. Walden and her absence with the death of her brother. Father, when I think about the losses we've had, Mr. Chambers and his father, and our workers and their children or their parents, I still thank you because you have been just that good to us, even in the midst of what we're going through. Thank you for your hands on COVID thus far. We don't know what tomorrow holds, but we know who holds it, and we thank you tonight for your continued to bless us. Thank you for our first responders, our police officers, our firefighters, our medic, our nurses, our doctors, for without them, Lord, we still will be going through a challenging time, but because of their unwilling and untiring love to continue to make sure that everyone is seen about, we are here today. So as we continue to meet and as we continue to go through this order of business, we thank you and we continue to give you praise, in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask that you all excuse my sitting tonight. I'm having some challenges with my foot and my leg, so Mayor Protem Chambers will be standing for me, and then when we get down to the State of the City address, I'll also be reading that from my seat. So at this time, we have an award or award of recognition, and I would like to invite the members of Vaughan Chapel to the podium at this time, all members of Vaughan Chapel Baptist Church. Vaughan Chapel had a program, it was last weekend or the weekend before, that I was unable to attend, and I actually thought I had spoken with their leader of the activity, and she did talk to me, but I forgot we had spoken. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. De Noozer if he would read the proclamation.
Well, it's an award of recognition.
Okay, award of recognition.
Mayor's Award of Recognition presented to Vaughan Chapel Missionary Baptist Church in celebration of 149 years of service to Milledgeville, to honor the five pastors, the lineage of deacons, and the church members who have attended to the spiritual needs of the faithful citizens of Milledgeville since 1873, and to acknowledge Vaughan Chapel as a trailblazer in service, as a Christ-centered church meeting the needs of individuals and families in our community, and as a church teaching the scripture that supports the motto of life, laugh, and love, life, laugh, and love.
Turn the pro- the award around, he's getting the backseat. Oh, okay, all right. The next item is a sad one for us all. On May 23rd, one of our long-serving members on City Council passed away.
April.
April 23rd, thank you, excuse me. Better known to all of us as Boo, served on this body representing the residents of District Five for more than 20 years. At this time, I would like to ask the clerk to read the proclamation that I have already presented to family, to the family at his services on May 1st into the minutes of this meeting as a tribute to his memory.
Proclamation, Office of the Mayor, City of Milledgeville, Georgia. Whereas Richard Mullins Jr. dedicated his life to public service, first serving our country in the Army, then as a career firefighter for the, first for the City of Milledgeville Fire Department, and then for the Baldwin County Fire Department, and finally for 22 years as an elected official on the Milledgeville City Council. And whereas, known to all as Boo, Boo Mullins led his life with a commanding presence, thoughtful opinions, well-placed remarks, a robust laugh, and always with a catchphrase or two. And whereas winning a special election held on November 7th, 2000, and attending his first council meeting on December 12th, 2000, Boo Mullins began a two-decade path that would hone his governmental leadership skills, garner him the prestigious certificate of dedication from the Harold F. Holt Municipal Training Institute, see him negotiate agreements on behalf of the City of Milledgeville, and serve the city of, city on the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. And whereas Boo Mullins was much admired for living his life to the fullest, for his wit, his willingness to always help his friends, and most of all, for the deep love and devotion to his mother, sister, children, aunts, cousins, and cherished grandchild. And whereas Boo Mullins has had a positive and impressive impact upon the people in our community, and it is proper and fitting to highlight his life, his many contributions, and his memory by proclaiming a special day in his honor. Now therefore, I, Mary Parm Copeland, as Mayor of the City of Milledgeville, do hereby proclaim Sunday, May 1st, 2022, as Richard Boo Mullins Jr. Day in the City of Milledgeville, and encourage all citizens to reflect on his service to the residents of this city of Milledgeville and to his family and many friends.
So for those of you all, I know it's kind of awkward to see, but we have Mr. Mullins' area draped over here, and the draping will be there throughout the whole month of May. So I want everyone to know that the City of Milledgeville is thinking of his family and his friends during this day at time, and we are remembering his service to the City of Milledgeville, his booming laugh, many sayings, and most of all, his deep love for his family. He will be greatly missed and hard to replace, and I'm sure we'll start seeing some people, I hope, that are interested to put yourself in line within the next couple of weeks in council. Mayor and council will be discussing this along with our city attorney in the next couple of weeks as to the procedures. Next on tonight's agenda is the State of the City address.
Mayor, do you want to do the other proclamation?
Oh, I didn't see it on my thing, I'm sorry, I forgot. Go ahead, have another special presentation.
We, we never keep anything meeting-wise away from the city clerk, but we did this time.
Sorry.
And I asked the mayor if I could be the one to read the proclamation, even though it's under her signature, but last week was Annual Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, the 53rd Annual Municipal Clerk's Week, and we have a proclamation that I would like to read into the record tonight and then present to our city clerk that keeps all of us straight, but especially me, day in and day out, planning for these meetings and open records requests and all the other things that he does, but the proclamation reads, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas a professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, our Mayor Parm Copeland, Mayor of the City of Milledgeville in the State of Georgia, do hereby recognize the week of May 1st through May 7, 2022, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Bo De Noozer, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Wherefore, I have hereunto set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed on this 10th day of May, 2022. Mary Parm Copeland, Mayor of the City of Milledgeville.
Well, we got you, Mr. Bo.
Thank you.
We also have a letter to the editor that will be in the Union Recorder sometime this week, but we couldn't put that in there before this because we would have stole our own thunder, so thank you for what you do for mayor and for council, and especially for me every day, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. De Noozer. Mr. De Noozer keeps, makes sure that we all shine, and I thank him for that, and he wants it just right.
Mr. Jordan, we're good, y'all.
Thank you, and please forgive me, I did not recognize Mr. Mullins' daughter is here tonight. Thank you for being here, Ms. Kellin. All right, so now we're going to get down to the State of the City address, the 2021 State of the City address, it should be 2022, but I'm looking at the mistake. Good evening, everyone. It is indeed an honor to present our annual State of the City address. I would like to begin by thanking each member of City Council and the citizens of Milledgeville for your continued determination and resilience throughout 2021, as our community and this nation has made great strides to move beyond the grasp of the global pandemic and return to a sense of normalcy in our daily lives. I am equally proud of how great the men and women that work for the City of Milledgeville have been able to continuously provide the same high level of operations and services throughout 2021 to our constituents while navigating through the ever-changing guidelines and best practices. Our staff is committed to ensuring the safety of themselves and others by continuing to follow Georgia Department of Public Health and CDC guidelines, cleaning and sanitizing workspace daily, and ensuring that cleaning and sanitizing items are available use in all city buildings. Keeping the citizens and employees of the city safe has been and continues to be our top priority. 2021 has brought about the promise of better days ahead, and as the pandemic guidelines have loosened, the City of Milledgeville has ramped its efforts to fully resume normal operations. We have accomplished significant achievements and in progress in 2021 that have benefited our citizens and the community at large. In the area of public works, our Public Works Department completed a resurfacing project on Stevens Court and remodified intersections on Pine Valley Road and Holly Hill Road. In preparation for local maintenance and improvement grants, L-MeG, from the Georgia Department of Transportation, the city has signed a contract with an engineering firm for all streets to be rated for resurfacing in the future. A contract for the 2019, 2020, and 2021 local maintenance and improvement grants construction was awarded, and resurfacing for these projects is currently in progress. The stormwater department identified 33 major stormwater issues, or hotspots, and completed 60 work orders requests. Some stormwater improvements that have been completed during 2021, including the replacement of stormwater pipes and cross drains along Reed Circle, the installation of a new storm drain vaults on Pine Valley Road, the replacement of a linear cross drain on Coventry Court, the replacement of catch basins and cross drains along Stevens Court and Stevens Drive, and stormwater maintenance of the creek adjacent to West Charlton Street. In the area of public safety, the Milledgeville Police Department recognized its first-ever female chief of detectives when Major Etta R. Gray was promoted to head up the Criminal Investigation Division. Gray was featured in the local media outlets, the Union Recorder, and the Baldwin Bulletin for this promotion. Major Philip Taylor was also promoted to head up Support Services Division, and Major Link Boyer was promoted to head up the Patrol Division. Sergeant James Pisack was named Officer of the Year by the Milledgeville Exchange Club. Then Sergeant, now Major, Link Boyer was nominated as one of the Top 20 Shining Stars under the 40, under 40 for Milledgeville Scene Magazine, and was featured on the cover of the magazine. The Military Fire Rescue Services received a $46,000 Firehouse Up Grant to acquire extraction tools. These tools are used to aid Fire Rescue Services in rescuing individuals during vehicle collisions. I'm sorry, my reading is terrible tonight. Fire Rescue Services also held on an opera house to showcase the completion of renovation's performance at Fire Station 2. Renovation work is currently underway at Fire Station 1. Fire Rescue Services had a tremendous community presence in 2021 by participating in 93 community events, which is an amazing number of events within a calendar year. Some of these events, including assisting the Georgia Memorial Cemetery with placing a new rope on its flagpole along with a new flag, assisting Overview, Inc. with passing out home goods items at Walter B. Williams Park, participated in the MDA boot drive at Walmart and Lowe's shopping centers, visiting Graham Homes to spray water for a birthday party, visiting Georgia Military College for a Patrons' Day celebration, participated in a downtown event with Santa Claus at Amici's Restaurant for kids to meet, Santa, and presenting the Boys and Girls Club with a special gift from the kids on Christmas. I think we also didn't list that our fire rescue team, and I want to make sure we highlight that, Mr. Griffith, that they were able to save two people's lives, and hopefully we'll be able to print.
One of those will be at a meeting in the near future.
Okay, all right. In the area of water and sewer, our water treatment plant received the Plant Platinum Award for the Georgia Association of Water Professionals for its water treatment technique. The water treatment plant also renewed its microbial laboratory certificate. This certificate allows us to perform our bacterial testing as well as testing for other utilities. Our water pollution control plant installed a new chlorination system, installed a new elevator at the Camp Creek Lift Station, and installed a new variable frequency drive and two new pumps at the main lift station. Our utility maintenance department successfully installed a new sewer system to serve the Dole's Boulevard area. The utility maintenance department also began replacing water lines along West Thomas Court in 2021, and is in the process of completing the project this year. This installation will provide improved residential water and fire protection services to approximately 15 to 20 residents in this area. Two utility crew leaders will be attending a wastewater collection training, and another crew leader will be attending a distribution operations and maintenance training. These trainings were scheduled in 2021 but were postponed due to COVID-19. In the area of city administration, our finance department maintained major functions of the city such as finance, payroll, procurement, utility building, business license, property taxes, hotel motel taxes, all revenues, et cetera. All these functions were used to manage a budget more than $35 million. The finance department partnered with Overview, Inc. on a Department of Community Affairs Low Income Household Water Assistant Program to help pay for water services for eligible households with disconnect and/or past due balances with the city. The finance department received the Government Finance Officers Association, JIFA, certification of achievement in financial reporting for the 36th consecutive year. Our financial director received a service award for the position of past president of Georgia Government Finance Officers Association. Our finance director and the mayor attended the Georgia Municipal Association Municipal Revenue Administration Certificate Program and received certifications. Our business office maintained water utility collections during COVID-19 by working with the water customers and providing payment plans during the height of the pandemic. Human Resources received an $8,000 wellness grant to promote health awareness for city employees. Due to COVID-19 constraints, the city was not able to hold its annual employee appreciation luncheon, but the city recognized its staff by providing a boxed lunch from Chick-fil-A. Employees also received certificates of recognition for their years of service. Main Street DDA partnered with the Downtown Doers, a volunteer group that attended two events to improve the appearance of downtown. Main Street DDA successfully hosted three events, which were all well-attended. The Planning and Zoning Department facilitated the annexation of property along North Columbus Street into the city limits for a new development project. The city successfully completed the required applications for CARES Act funding and ARPA allocations. Our city manager completed the Robert E. Knox Jr. Municipal Leadership Institute Program and attained his certification. The mayor has served on several boards and committees both locally and statewide, and is currently serving as president of the Georgia Municipal Association, GMA, District Six. This term will aspire in August of 2022. The mayor also received a certificate of excellence from the Harold F. Holt Municipal Training Institution during the Georgia Municipal Association Annual Convention. Again, these are just a few of the activities completed by the city and accomplishments achieved by our city employees this past year, who have been on the front lines of serving this community. The City Council and I are profoundly grateful for the dedication of our employees and the high level of service they deliver to our constituents daily. As we move ahead in 2022, you can expect the same degree of commitment from the City of Milledgeville that we have demonstrated in the past. Our executive staff is currently identifying projects for the use of ARPA allocations that the city has received. We want to be good stewards of these funds and plan to use them on projects that will have the most significant impact in our community. We have also begun working with the county on local option sale tax loss negotiations. These negotiations are required by law to be conducted every 10 years as a new census data is collected and released. Being able to provide safe recreational areas where our children can play and interact with one another is another one of our priorities this year, and we plan to achieve this by working to replace playground equipment at Central City Park. This beloved park is used by so many in our community for leisure outings, birthday parties, family gatherings, local nonprofit events, et cetera. Installing new playground equipment will not only enhance the natural beauty of Central City Park, but will ensure that this green space will be enjoyed by all of our community for years to come. In 2022, it is my hope that we as a city will continue to strive to make our community one that we can all be proud of. I believe that we must always work to be inclusive and to have boards, commissions, and committees reflect our community as a whole. I am pleased to report that we are finalizing plans to include citizen input during the City Council work sessions to make sure all of our citizens have a voice in their government. Our diversity is our strength, and I will continue to make every effort, as I know members of council and our city manager, will to ensure that all citizens play an active role in the decision-making process of our local government. In closing, let me thank you for the honor of serving you as mayor. I am extremely proud of the things we have been able to accomplish by working together, mayor and council working together, city and county leaders working together, and most importantly, you, the citizens of Milledgeville, working together, helping your neighbors and sacrificing for the common good, thereby making our city and community strong and resilient, what has truly been unprecedented times. Thank you for entrusting us, the elected officials, and the staff of the City of Milledgeville, with the task of managing the operations of this great city. We value your confidence and support as we strive to make Milledgeville a thriving place to live, work, and play. May God bless us all. So at this time, you all have read the, a copy of the April 12th, 2022 council meeting minutes, are there any corrections? Do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes? So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The minutes are adopted as official. We have two public hearings tonight. The first is to consider amending the Land Development Code, and the second is to garner public input on the 23rd fiscal budget. The first public hearing is to consider amending Land Development Code to rezone 1340 Carica Lane from single-family residence 2 to a multiple resident 2. The procedure for conducting the hearing to amend the Land Development Code will be as follows. Once it has been determined that this public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amended Land Development Code. We will hear a report from the Planning and Zoning Director, including advisory decisions of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Council will first hear from the applicant and Council will first hear from the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. We will then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we will then give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal, but the rebuttal must be limited to the points of issues raised by the opposition. We would then give the opposition an opportunity for rebuttal, but again, the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issues already raised. Please make sure that before you speak, you give your name and address for the record. Has the public here been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by caption, please.
An ordinance amending the ordinance is passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002 known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millersville, Georgia. The ordinance rezones property located at 1340 Carricker Lane from SFR 2 to MR 2.
At this time, I will recognize the zoning administrator for a report to include the advisory decision on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Merv.
Hey, this property currently houses an apartment building. It's got four apartments in it. It is dilapidated, and it has been vacant for more than a year, so it has lost its grandfather clause. And we have a developer now who would like to rehab it, so he needs to rezone it to MR 2 to make it come into compliance. And it was unanimous to agree.
Is the applicant or anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of the amendment?
Hello, Gary Gentey. I am the applicant, and we're just trying to look forward to provide good housing for the area, and we're looking forward to finishing this project.
Did you state your address?
Excuse me?
Did you state your address when?
Yes, 1340 Carricker Lane.
Did you catch it? Your physical address?
2360 Shelby Street, Columbus, Georgia.
Give that Mr. Medidance. All right, thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of the amendment? Since there's no one to speak in opposition, there's no need for a rebuttal on either side, so are there any questions or comments from the council?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, and it's to Mr. Gentey. I'm hoping I'm pronouncing your name right.
You can come back up to the podium, Mr. Gentey, so you can answer.
Is it Gentey?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to say to you, thank you for even taking this on. It's been looking really, really bad. That's Ms. Walden's district. It's been looking really, really bad for some time, so just want you to know how much we appreciate you coming into that area and are willing to do something to that part of town. Often, that side of town gets really neglected, as you can see going through the area, and there's much, much more to be done over there in that area, so I hope this will be one of many projects that you decide to do.
I hope so. It seems challenging, but I'm willing to take it on.
It is. Thanks so much for that. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Got a quick question, sir.
Mr. Gentey.
I just have a quick question, and that is, are you rehabbing the existing structure?
Yes, sir, it is sound.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yes, sir.
It's a little difficult to tell by this picture.
It actually looks like that.
If it's sound, then that is great.
Yes, sir.
That you're able to do that and save that cost from raising and having to.
Exactly. CBS block, very, very strong structure.
Good, good deal. Thank you.
One of the things that we really need here is dwelling for families.
Yes.
That's what we're really lacking here. We have enough dwellings for college students and young people, but we don't have enough places for families, so that's why I'm excited about it.
Yes. I have over six properties that I've renovated in Columbus, and I've started out really doing some nice things in Columbus, and I hope to do some things here as well.
Hopefully so. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, then we'll proceed on with the rest of our agenda. All right, so that concludes the presentation of evidence in that particular matter. Members of council, you have heard the ordinance and the evidence presented. Do I hear a motion on the amendment?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the we accept the request of the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve it.
Second.
Clerk, please call the room.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
And this concludes the first public hearing. The second public hearing is for the first reading of ordinance O-2205-05 that will adopt the 2023 fiscal year annual operating budget at the June 14 meeting and to conclude a public hearing to garner citizen input into the budget prior to it being adopted. This procedure for conducting this public hearing will be as follows. We will determine that this public hearing has been properly advertised. The clerk will read the ordinance by caption as a first reading. And finally, we will then recognize anyone who would like to ask questions or make comments regarding the proposed budget. If anyone wishes to speak, they are encouraged to do so. However, if you do speak, I ask that you come to the podium and that you give your name and address for the record. Ms. Clerk, has this public hearing been properly advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I'll ask the clerk to please read the ordinance O-2205-5 by caption for a first read.
An ordinance to adopt the fiscal year 2023 annual operating budget beginning on July 1, 2022 and ending on June 30, 2023, to adopt the five-year capital improvements program to make the budget available for inspection, to outline the adoption schedule, and for other purposes.
This concludes the budget public hearing and first reading. This ordinance is scheduled to come back before the body for a second reading and adoption at our June 14 council meeting.
I'm sorry, I need to ask if there's anybody present who wants to address it.
Is there anyone who wish to speak or ask questions in reference to the first reading for the budget? And now, this concludes the budget public hearing and first reading. Yes.
I would like to.
Come to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diane Lucette, and I am a citizen of Baldwin County. I live at 421 Brook Street. I would like to talk about our firefighters and.
Madam Mayor, you do what now?
Firefighters.
Speak, so I couldn't hear you.
The firefighters.
Okay, is it in reference to the budget?
Budget. An increase in pay for the firefighters. Is this not the opportune time to speak? Certainly.
Yeah?
Our firefighters, they do a tremendous job here in Baldwin County, and as a citizen, I think I can speak for the majority of the citizens here that they deserve to be allocated and given a little bit more money for what they do. And if you would take that into consideration, I sure would appreciate it, and I think a lot of our citizens would too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
David Ustrey, 576 Nelson Road in Millersville. Thank you, Madam Mayor, city manager, members of council, for the progress you all have extended over the past few years. We've had tremendous challenges. Through the leadership of Chief William Collier, we have made huge leaps becoming a first-class fire department. I just want to say a few. Number one thing we did before he first got here, and y'all backed him up on this, we increased our staffing to 12 members per shift. That gave us two full engine companies, one full ladder company. Secondly, we created EMS initiative. We made requirement now every new hire must be EMTB certified within two years. Right now, as I'm speaking, we got 20 of our members that are enrolled in a class that Chief Crumbs and Chief Collier had partnered with Grady to get our firefighters update. That saved the city thousands of dollars right there, that one thing there. And plus, it's going to give us, if everybody passes, 20 EMTB firefighters. Thirdly, we created a more diverse staff. Now, we have men and women on our set, and she's not here, she just stepped out, but Sergeant Brenda Webb is our newly promoted firefighter that I wanted to highlight. We had several new hires that just completed rookie school, and they just passed, so it's really, really exciting times at the fire department. We also have lowered our ISO ratings from a four to a three, saving our citizens and our stakeholders thousands of dollars in their property insurance. It's something that we need to highlight, and they should be very thankful for that. That was a direct result of the work that we did at the fire department. And lastly, we revitalized, and you mentioned it, Mayor, our two stations, which I was really glad, because when I got here, you couldn't go to Station 2, and you would have an awful smell. Now, it's really nice inside there. The stations are living. We'd probably increase their life by another five years. Despite all these accomplishments, we still face challenges. If you look at our department, we are a young department overall. Average on-the-job time is seven years. When we consider that, that's not very much. Let's make exception to Lieutenant Falk. He's been here 40 years. We don't have any of that. My mentor, though, because of who I am now at the fire department, is because of Lieutenant Falk. And but if you look at that, we have to figure out a way to retain these employees, like these new hires that just passed. They're faced with offers right now. Putnam County, $41,000. We're giving them $31,000. We got to consider that. We got to look at that, because now we've invested rookie school and all this time in this, we want to retain them and keep them here, because we want that, we want to stay here 30 years. We don't want them to stay here two years and leave. I'm here today myself, along with other members of the fire department, in a respectful way to lean on you all, our city government, our city government, to pass this proposal that Chief Collier has put before you. When I look at it as a business owner myself, 22 years, I look at fiscal budgets every year. The world we live in is not the same. Our budget's changing just like this. My budget and my business, every month, it's increasing, it's changing. So we have to think, well, look at the numbers. He has really looked at, he has really taken a conservative approach. In my opinion, it really should be more around a $10,000 raise. If you look at what it costs us in America, I just heard on Fox News this morning and on CNN, it costs us $5,000 now. All of us, we're not exempt, no exception to Millersville, Baldwin County, it's costing us $5,000 more per person to live in what it costs us now. That's not even in consideration in Chief Collier's thing, but that should be in there. So fiscally speaking, when I look at it, it is very fiscally responsible. The way he's saying, let's just go up gradually to meet the competition so that we can retain these firefighters that we have already and build a good, strong foundation for, I mean, this is part of our vision, for the future of our citizens and stakeholders. Currently, yes, right now, we're here where we're at, but we got to plan for, I'm not going to be here seven, 10, 10 more years. I want these new firefighters that we're training like, well, Lieutenant Falk, I don't see him in here.
He's in the bay.
Like he trained me. You see what I'm saying? He's been here 40 years, but I'm not planning on being here for 40 years. So we want to make it better. As leaders, we have to recognize that, and I want to tell you thank you for all the hard work that y'all have done. This has been the craziest time we've ever seen, that the whole world has ever seen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Job well done.
Good evening. Larry Martin, 169 Martindale Road. Yeah, it was named after me. Firefighter named it after me, because didn't have a name when they came to put out a fire there, so I'm proud that I can tell my grandkids. But what I want to talk about is the things that we don't always see. I've had the opportunity of going with members of this fire department to different activities, boys' and girls' clubs and things like that. At a time when we're looking at mentors for our community that we need, these guys can't be replaced. They never really go off duty, and we can't, we can't pay for that. So giving them a raise, you know, is in our own best interest, because they're mentors, you know? They do things that a lot of people don't want to do. Just this past weekend, they had the opportunity to work with the chief and take a young man out to the ballgame. They were raising funds. Those are the things that you can't pay for. Then we got the young people here. I've always encouraged young people. When I fell in love with Millersville, I came here in '76. My love affair started then. I was talking to Steve not too long ago. Took my first pair of clothes to his cleaners when I was a student at Georgia College. But I always encourage kids to take their skills and come back here. Don't just take your skills and leave. We got young people. He walked out a little while ago, but a young man that was on this fire department, his father and I were best friends. I watched him grow up and play ball at Baldwin County. So we want to keep them here. We want to keep those mentors here. You know, we want to keep these firemen here so that they can improve our community, and they, I mean, they work well together. So I encourage you, you know, no, I implore you, you know, to really consider, you know, doing what's right about these young men and women. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Madam Mayor, Firefighter Rice and Firefighter Simmons are here. Here's our new rookies. I wanted to recognize them real quick. Job well done, passing rookie school.
Would you all please stand for us back there? Would you have them to stand so we can see who they are? We don't know. I saw some different faces this morning. Thank you.
Lamani is a result of our youth development program. We came to school when he was in Baldwin and got interested in fire service, so.
Good to hear.
This is part of our work here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Joe Taylor, 105 Watson Runners Road, Millersville, Georgia, mayor, council, my fellow firefighters. I've been employed with the city for 27 years. I have seen difference in the last three years since Chief Collier have been here. We have got educated, way more educated than we have in the past. The stations have been improved tremendously, and what he's asking for, I think, is for good, because we're losing our firefighters, and we can't afford to keep training them like Chief Ustrey said and constantly losing them to our neighboring counties. They're just unheard of. We're losing them left and right. So I'm in favor of what Chief Collier and our staff are asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rodriguez Warren, 146 Old Montcella Road. Been a fireman here almost nine years. I seen a potential increase with Chief Collier here. He giving young men chances to move up, and my brothers, my firefighters, and the ability to move up, he have to learn. So we ask for more pay. We don't, our job, our job is very important, what we do, is what we do. The city depending on us, the police department, but they depending on us. Now, I went to Putnam County, that's two months ago. I'm making $41,000 there. There's a potential, you're making about $47,000 here. So guys, we asking for a raise, but the thing about it is, he doing a tremendous job as the city chief down there. Three years since he been down here, it been amazing. It been a blessing, been experience. You know what he doing. It been amazing how he just come around and turn everything, they were upside down, upside up now. He's the best fire chief we ever have. He's amazing. I protect my hats off to him because he did well a lot. So we fight for what we, that we think we deserve. Thank y'all very much. You're blessed.
Caught you on the answer.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Ronald Crumbs Jr., 250 Farm Road, Millersville, Georgia. I'm a longtime resident here. I started out most of my public safety career. I started out most of my public safety career in my adult life as, started out as a volunteer, kind of like our mayor, I mean, our city manager here.
Your mayor, you're right.
So I didn't, I didn't bring my speech with me, because I was just wanting to be candid with you and just genuine. So we are asking for some increase in our pay, because we have increased so much through Chief Collier, getting us to do professional development program, all of the officers, all of the firefighters coming up. We have now deemed a schedule for all of them to follow, to be developed in, starting out car extrication after they're certified in the basic firefighter skills. So we go through a series of classes, and those help develop us in a professional realm where we could fit in nationally at any other fire department. So the raise that we're asking for is, we want to stay here. We want to continue to be of service to this community. And through Chief Collier's professional development, we have all been following that, and we continue ongoing process of completing those particular classes that'll make us a better employee for the city and better service to the community. We have extended CPR training, which has helped some of the firefighters that have actually made a positive impact on the community in saving lives. And we're very dedicated, and we're very well dedicated to the depths of training that will make us better. So we just want you to consider what we were asking, just face-to-face, and just maybe be recognized for our education and our trainings and some of the grants that we've acquired to get some tools to help take some of the burden off the city's budget, and just be a team. So thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. So I guess now I can say this concludes the budget public hearing and first reading. And let me say this to the fire department, and I think I'll say this on behalf of the whole council. We do see and we recognize what you do on a day-to-day basis, and we do want to make sure that we're taking care of our own as you take care of our city. So we thoroughly appreciate the work that you do. We've watched you come up to be that first-class fire department. I love the work you did at Station 2, 2 on Donald Out. Beautiful place. I can only imagine what Station 1 would look like when you completed. So thank you so much. This ordinance is scheduled to come back before this body for a second reading and adoption at June, on our, at our June 14 council meeting. I'll ask the clerk to please read Resolution R-2205-13.
A resolution to authorize and endorse the approval of the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, low-interest loan, as awarded by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to Coasties Bakery LLC, located at 135 South Wayne Street, for the purpose of helping offset the cost of purchasing a business, equipment, and building.
Okay, so this resolution, did you read the?
You want me to read the letter from the?
Yes.
Okay. This is a memorandum to the Mayor and Alderman of the City of Millersville from Willie R. Davis Jr., interim chair, Project Review Committee, date April 20, 2022, reference revolving loan fund recommendation for Coasties Bakery LLC. The Project Review Committee met on April 5, 2022, and April 19, 2022, to review a revolving loan fund application from Shawna and Wayne Westcrack for Coasties Bakery LLC. Coasties Bakery LLC will be located at 135 South Wayne Street. The purpose of the revolving loan for request is for funding to be used toward the building and business acquisition of the former Riles Bakery. After meeting with applicants and reviewing the application, as well as additional requests, requested information, the Project Review Committee unanimously submits to the city council the recommendation to not approve the loan application based on the following reasons. One, lack of collateral to cover the requested revolving loan fund amount. Two, lack of sufficient liquidity to support the startup and ongoing businesses. Three, insufficient secondary sources of loan payment. That concludes the memorandum.
Okay, so council, as the committee has recommended, council not to approve this particular resolution, is there a motion on this resolution?
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we affirm the position of the Project Review Committee and deny this loan application request.
I need a second, don't let it die.
Second.
I think we might add that we deny this resolution.
He did, he read it out. He read it out. So now it's been approved. Did you get the, um?
Yes, ma'am.
Question, second.
To deny.
To deny.
Deny.
All right, so at this time, the resolution is denied, and it is official.
Got a vote. I'll roll the motion.
It would you?
For a vote.
All right, so can you, let me have a motion on this resolution, 20, uh...
We did.
Now can we vote on this motion?
Sorry, I did not mean to confuse.
Well, it was a little confusing, and so I didn't...
Just denying.
It was a little disconfused. Okay, Mr. Bo, call the roll, and then we'll vote on it. That's why I asked him to read it.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Are we in order now, Mr. De? Uh, let me go back and ask a question. Ms. Bo, you have another ordinance, but I don't see it listed, the ordinance O-2205. Did we go through that? This is the set hearing?
Yes, ma'am, that, we didn't, not, that, this is the, the public hearing first reading.
Okay, okay, that was the first one.
That's the budget.
Okay.
We, we just conducted the public hearing, got the public input.
Okay, yes.
And then it will come back before council at the...
I was just looking at the dates.
I'd like to ask a question, because all of our resolutions, are they numbered 2204? Should they be 2205?
Well, they were presented, they were started in 2204. I mean, I can renumber them.
But see, and I...
That's what kind of throwed it off.
That's the confusion, is the agenda has 2205 for all of them, and then the resolutions itself have 2204.
Yes, I will, I will go back and change those.
Okay.
Because those are the resolutions that were carried over from the last meeting.
Okay.
And I'll renumber them then.
Okay.
If that's what was on the...
I think that's what's throwing it off.
Right there, and then when we got to that, to the other one, so that's okay. We're good with that now.
So 2204s will be 2205s.
Uh-huh. All right, this, you got it, Mr. De Nuz. I need to give you a second.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
All right, so this time, I'll ask the clerk to please read Resolution R-2205-14.
A resolution to authorize a contract with Georgia Safe Sidewalks for sidewalk trip hazard mitigation and Americans with Disabilities Act compliance on portions of sidewalks throughout the city of Millersville.
You have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Question to city manager.
Yes, ma'am.
So exactly what, what all are they going to be doing?
They, they go in, and this has actually been done four other times prior to me being, becoming city manager. The company goes in and measures the necessary tolerance when there's a jacked-up area of the sidewalk, and then they shave off that area that's jacked up, so that there's no longer a difference in elevation, but it's just simply a sloped surface as opposed to a complete difference between elevation. And you'll notice in the proposal, they do an inventory first, and in the proposal, you can see all of the places that they have identified that this needs to be done in. And if you'll notice, the last page and the information that you have is actually the AP report showing where they did this. Had two contracts with the city in 13, one in 16, one in 18, and one in 19 to do this. So it's, it's a pretty interesting process in terms of them measuring what they need to do to set the slope of, to make sure that the uneven areas that are trip hazard, they continue to be uneven, but they're ramped up, or they're ramped down as opposed to be in different elevations.
Jacked up, is that an industry term?
Jacked up is an industry term, a very professional industry term.
I was looking for something else.
Did we have that many left over?
Yes, and, and they, they, it's, Ms. Shinholster's, almost like they come up overnight with the tree roots that we've got under our sidewalks.
Because I knew they had done it before, and that's why I was thinking that we didn't have that many.
continual movement.
Constantly with the change.
Now, that's a good thing.
All right, so, um...
It certainly helps us from a liability standpoint.
Yes, it does.
All right, Mr. De Nuz, will you please read the, call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
All right, this resolution is adopted as official. At this time, I ask the clerk to please read Resolution R-2205-15.
So yes, ma'am, this is 2205-15. A resolution to authorize an agreement with C2I Control Instruments Incorporated to provide the first steps in designing a citywide water and wastewater master plan for a supervisory control and data acquisition system scatter.
You have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Chambers quiet over there. I'm going to take a peek over here at Ms. Shinholster. All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted as official. Clerk, please read Resolution R-2605-16 by caption.
2205-16.
2205.
A resolution, so this is Resolution R-2205-16. A resolution to authorize an agreement with CDW Government Incorporated for the purchase of Panasonic ToughBook notebooks, docking stations, mounting components, and insurance for the use in Millersville Police Department vehicles while on patrol.
You have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted as official. The last item on the agenda, let me take that back. All right, I'll ask the clerk to please read Resolution R-2205-17.
A resolution to authorize the one-year extension of two ground maintenance service agreements with a cut above of Millersville LLC to provide mowing and certain grounds maintenance services at city parks and on identified rights of way, and to provide mowing and certain maintenance in city cemeteries.
Now, you have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
Move, we approve.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted as official. The last item on the agenda is an alcohol license application for Big Mike's. I'll ask the clerk to present this application.
This is for Gary Martin Jr. on behalf of Killian Odin LLC, doing business as Big Mike's, located at 196 Robertson Mill Road, building a for beer and wine package to go.
You have heard the application, is there a motion to approve the application at this present time?
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
License are approved. This concludes the items on the agenda. Is there any further business that needs to come before this body? All right, then this concludes the business of order. At this time, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.